Hey, Todd Larson. Todd Larson, please report to the podium up front. Todd Larson, please report to the principal's office. Is that more familiar? [laughter] All right, I'm going to go ahead and get the city commission meeting started. It is 7:01. As promised, we'll want to start on time. I will ask for folks that are able to stand to please join me in the pledge of allegiance. All right, well, good evening, everyone. We do have quite a few in attendance tonight, as we do have some exciting things to cover in our commission meeting tonight. With that, I will ask to ensure we're all here, so we'll start with roll call.
Benson.
Here.
Brunick.
Here.
Hanoff.
Here.
Johnson.
Present.
Minor.
Here.
Schramm.
Here.
Villanueva.
Present.
Weber.
Here.
Mayor Mosher.
Here.
City manager Leon.
Here.
City attorney Denherter.
Here.
Next under routine business is to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of April 8th. What is the pleasure of the commission? So moved.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion on the minutes? Anybody in the public? All those in favor of approving the minutes say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Anybody abstaining? All right, minutes pass. Number three under routine business is the schedule of bills. What is the commission pleasure?
I move that we pay the bills.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion on the bills? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Hanoff.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Mayor Mosher.
Aye, motion carries. Number four under routine business is the city manager's report, so I will turn it over to city manager Leon.
Thank you, honorable mayor, members of the commission and public. A few things for you all this evening. First of all, congratulations to commissioners Benson and Villanueva for their reelection. Welcome back to another three-year term on city commission. [laughter] Also, welcome back David Sarda, who will be joining us at our next meeting. We'll have our old business with this sitting commission, and then we'll adjourn, and then we'll reseat. So many of you know that drill already, but that's what will be happening in our next meeting. Also, for commissioners Brunick and commissioner Weber, I've included at your podium there, at your desk, the safety center agreement with the county. There is an upcoming meeting with the county regarding the safety center, and they're beginning discussion on a juvenile detention holding type area within our county. And so commissioner Brunick and Weber are representatives there, and they, along with staff, have been invited to join in a discussion with Yankton County. Want to talk a little bit trash, trashy. I want to talk trashy, even though Father's here up front. I know. But this is citywide cleanup trash. This isn't, I want to talk about tonnage. So citywide cleanup is complete, thanks to all the crews who worked hard to get rid of our refuse. We were up this year from last year. In 2023, there were 250.5 tons picked up or dropped off at the transfer station. This year, we were up from that to 383.48 tons. So considerable amount of junk or treasure, I guess, depending upon how you look at it. That was down overall from the COVID years, but I think during those times, people were home and really purging, and maybe less of that's going on now. So, good event, appreciate everybody that participated. If you have hazardous waste, household hazardous waste, that event is Saturday morning, this Saturday. Folks can bring their household hazardous waste out into the transfer station and for small fee, drop those off, and they'll be disposed of safely. If you have questions, contact Brooke Gayden at 668-5211, and she will tell you more information about that. There's also information on our website. Couple of meetings I want to talk about and request that the media know about, the public know about, in case we have a quorum, and also request commission attendance for those who are interested. On 5/7, so May 7th on Tuesday, from noon to 1:30, we are going to have a pickleball meeting that's going to happen here in this room. What has happened, as you all know, is that we have a grant from the Land Water Conservation Fund and Avera to assist in the cost of converting pickleball courts at Westside Park, tennis courts at Westside Park into pickleball courts. Since we've started this project, a lot has changed. Costs have changed, interests have changed, needs have changed, and ideas have gotten bigger. And so we kind of want to get everyone in the room, talk about the budget, talk about what's realistic, what we could maybe add in future years, what we absolutely need. We've asked them to bring their paddles, not for Todd and I, but for instead to vote on things, so we know, sort of show of paddles, what people are looking at when we're asking them about priorities. So if we do have the opportunity to have a couple commissioners there, that would be great, so you guys can hear that discussion too, and it may help you as you're budgeting for capital. So I'll have Jean be reminding you of that again for the media. Notice that that could be a quorum event, although there won't be voting by the city commission occurring if more than a handful show up. 5:14, so that's the following Tuesday, I believe, here in this building. From 12 to 1, we're going to talk about bike tracks. I don't know anything about this, but my understanding is there is a new sort of desire in our community for a dirt bike type track with a pump track? Okay. So for folks who are interested in hearing about that and getting into that or curious about that, that's happening from 12 to 1, and I think that's more of an exploratory...
Is that coming from commissioner Brunick?
That might be. That might be. He wants to get to the meetings faster on the pump track. But for those folks interested in that, they should attend that. We have some folks in the community who are avid bikers and would like to pursue a space for that in our community. On your agenda for tonight, you'll notice under consent, something a little different that we typically don't have, thankfully. It's a correction of a typographical error. What has happened was administratively, we assigned a memo with the same, or two memos with the same memo number. We know how to fix that, but fixing that internally without your consent is changing the public record, and we don't want to do that without being transparent. So we're asking you to give us a little grace for our mistake and allow us to change the public record and re-number that memo. Also, at your next meeting, we will have minutes from this meeting for you to consider, as well as minutes from the canvas for you to consider, along with city attorney Denherter providing the oath to the newly elected individuals and the election of the mayor amongst you. I believe that's all I have to bring to your attention, Mayor Mosher. If there's questions for me, I'm happy to answer them by the commission and the public.
Thank you for your report. Are there any questions from the commission for city manager Leon?
I do have a quick question. Do we have any update on, speaking of Westside Park, any timeframe or news on that project right now?
Don't think I have a specific timeframe, but my understanding was the contract was for 90 days for completion of that project, and they started in March. So I would, you know, we're 30 days into it, I would say, and I would hope that by the time summer rolls around that we're back in business with water, with the landscaping, ducks, and we're all in good shape. But we could certainly ask the contractor if they can give us something a little more clear and let you and the public know, because I'm sure they're anxious for that project to get complete, too.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Any other questions from the commission? All right, seeing no microphones go on, we will move then on to the proclamations. We actually have two tonight. The first one is Arbor Day 2024, so I'll go ahead and read that one. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees; and whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska; and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, with the city of Yankton celebrating its 41st year of being a tree city, USA; and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-living oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife; and whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products; and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. Now therefore, I, Stephanie Mosher, mayor of the city of Yankton, do hereby proclaim April 26, 2024, as Arbor Day in the city of Yankton. I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, and I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. And anyways, we fixed the proclamation with the city seal, so we'll get that going. I know, I just was visiting with Todd right beforehand, we are doing a planting of a tree as we do every year on Arbor Day. That will take place Friday at 10:00 a.m. Todd, remind me again, is that Memorial Park this year again? I know we've...
[inaudible]
Yep, that's right. I recall that now. So yeah, we'll be planting a tree Friday at 10:00 a.m. by the sand volleyball courts, if you want to join us in celebration of that. I won't make Todd come forward, but we'll make sure we have the proclamation available there. The second one we're doing tonight is pretty special. This isn't even the first time this individual's been to the city commission, being recognized. I think it's his third sport tied to why we're recognizing him. Usually, he's been here because he's been part of teams that have won state titles, and we're very excited about that. But this is something he's doing individually, and as soon as it was announced, we wanted to let you know how special you are to our community. So, I'm going to read that. Sorry, I always get a little choked up when they're special, and it's people I know and think the world of, and so it makes it very special for me, too. So, whereas Miles Crosskey attended Sacred Heart School and is now a senior at Yankton High School; and whereas Miles is the son of Mike and Erica Crosskey and brother to Josephine Harrison, Nora Sabrina, and Ivan; and whereas Miles has participated in sports including badminton, baseball, hockey, golf, and tennis, trust me, this list is not as long as when I get to the countries, and has served as student manager and statistician for the Yankton Bucks basketball team; and whereas Miles has traveled around the world competing in badminton competitions, including the countries of Australia, Brazil, Canada, Chile, Colombia, Denmark, England, Ireland, Japan, Peru, South Korea, Spain, Switzerland, and Thailand; and whereas Miles has received numerous gold, silver, and bronze medals in international badminton competition; and whereas Miles will be competing in both singles and mixed doubles badminton for Team USA at the 2024 Paralympics to be held in Paris in late August. This is so cool. Making him the first Yankton native to represent Team USA in the Olympics or Paralympics. Now therefore, I, Stephanie Mosher, mayor of Yankton, South Dakota, on behalf of the city commission, gosh, and I got to tell you, I think I can take the privilege of saying on behalf of the entire Yankton community, congratulate Miles Crosskey on his numerous accomplishments and wish him the very best as he represents the city of Yankton, the state of South Dakota, and the United States at the 2024 Paralympic Games this summer. Come on forward.[927.23][927.23][applause]
All right, let's get his family up here, too. This is a big honor, I know. Nobody does anything in sports individually. It's a religion, a lot of things. [coughs] Oh, yeah. Yeah.
All right, coaches. I know there's some coaches in here. Come on up. Coaches, don't be hideous. Family, you can stay, too, if you want. Okay. All right. All right, we'll let you take this, and then your microphone here. Yeah, it doesn't matter. We have on either...
[inaudible]
Yeah, you can just grab that. Miles was not aware that I was going to make him talk tonight until right before the meeting, so I'll try to make it easy on him. But I did think it was really cool for him, for folks. He's received a lot of recognition for being selected. South Dakota Public TV did a really nice story on him. If you haven't had a chance to look at that, go to YouTube, Google it. It was a great story. But I know not everybody is familiar with you, Miles, so maybe, one, I think we know a little bit about you, but why don't you just tell us a little bit about how you got on this route, and how do you get from Yankton, South Dakota, to the Paris 2024 Olympics?
Yeah, so I started back in 2013. It was the first time I ever played the sport, which was the Dwarf Athletic Association. They put on a week-long event of different sports each day, and it happened to be the World Dwarf Game, so dwarfs from all around the world come and play. I played in all the different sports and happened to fall in love with badminton, so I played it once a year, and then 2015, we found out it was going to be in the Paralympics, so I, end of 2015, I think, I started training more and more, and then went to my first international tournament when I was 10, and that was 2016 in Northern Ireland. And ever since then, I've just continued to practice and grow, and my love for the sport's just gone up and up from there. And now I qualified, which was a goal all along.
So we know, yeah, we know, obviously, as I think last week, you kind of already started all the press coverage of being a U.S. Olympian and what all is tied to that. What does that calendar look like between now and actually getting to the Olympics? Like, what is all like? I don't even know. I've never met an actual Olympian before. That's not true. I guess I've met a couple, but not as close as I know, Miles. So tell us a little bit about what does the rest of the road look like for you as far as everything you're going to kind of be required to do as you prepare to go?
Yeah, so I'll finish up senior year playing tennis and graduation, and then I'll sign up for classes at USD, and then right after I do that, I'll fly down to Texas and just train the entire summer, and then leave for Paris, I don't know, end of August sometime, and then compete August 29 through September 2.
That's awesome. So what, sorry, I'm full of questions, and then I'll let the commission, I'm sure there's a few other ones they usually ask, too. So what's been the most exciting thing about it, if that's a fair question, and what kind of do you think is going to be a challenge or something that you're really going to have to kind of push yourself at?
Yeah, I think the most fun part about it is just playing the sport I love, along with meeting new people and playing against people I know, and we're going to be enemies on the court, but really good friends off the court, which is amazing. And the hardest part about going to the Paralympics is not knowing that everybody else is training just as hard and not knowing what's going to happen when I get there.
Well, a gold medal, of course, right?
Hopefully, yeah.[1236.33][1236.33][laughter]
I love it. Well, you just mentioned, too, the other part was going to be what's your future plans after the Olympics, and you shared you're going to go to USD.
Yep.
And study...
Study business.
Business.
Yep.
I happen to know somebody at USD in the business school, if you need a connection.
Yeah.
He already reached out to you, I know.
Yep.
I love it. Family, are you guys going to be making it over to the, Mike's already shaking his head yes. I know Mike and Eric, I know both of you have been able to accompany him on a lot of trips. The whole family, or just mom and dad, or? If you're going to answer, I'm going to have to have you go to the mic, but otherwise, you can just, yeah, depends?
Depends.
Okay. Oh, that's right, other kids in the family, too, right? Still at home, starting high school and college. That's right. Miles, anything else to share with the city commission? I will open it up to see if they, anything I didn't ask about. Yours, I was just going to say, your doubles partner is two, and...
She's from, or, she's J.C. Simon, and she's from Michigan, St. John's, Michigan. So she'll also be training with me down in Texas.
Awesome. All right, commission, I don't want to be the only one. Is anybody else? Yep, I see commissioner Villanueva.
Yep, if I could. Miles, congratulations. What an achievement to, one, I'm so proud, not only as a citizen of Yankton, but as a commissioner, that you're representing Yankton and family. You're going to be kind of a role model, if you're not already, for a lot of kids that are, Yankton's a big sport town, and what would you, what advice would you give young people that are looking to potentially become Olympic athletes? What would you give them as they're on their Olympic journey, potentially?
Yeah, I would say just, even if they're not sure about playing the sport, just go out and play it, and you'll meet great friends, which I can't thank Yankton enough for allowing me to play sports and meet amazing people along the way that are going to be lifelong friends. But just go out there, have fun, and then, once you start playing, you'll fall in love and start training, and hopefully make the Olympics also.
Thanks, congratulations.
Thank you.
Anybody else on the commission? All right, well, Miles, again, I mean it, on behalf of the city commission and the entire community, you know you won't be there alone, because you'll have the entire community here watching and probably yelling at their computers and their TV screens, and we hope you feel all of that energy that will send your way at the Olympic Games.
Thank you.
Congratulations again. Let's give them another round of applause.[1389.87][1389.87][applause] All right, my thanks to all of you for coming in to celebrate this very special individual that we're so very fortunate to have in our community. With that, before I turn it over to public appearances, I promised everybody in the hallway they would not have to stay for the rest of the meeting unless they want. So if you were here because of the proclamation for Miles, we get it. You wouldn't be the first to get up and leave, so we'll just take a brief minute to allow that to happen. All right, I'm always a big Olympian. I like sit glued watching the Olympics when they're on, so this is, it's fun to have a whole special meeting for that, for our community. All right, with that, then, we are going to turn to public appearances. I do know we have a former commissioner in the house who is asked to address the commission tonight, so I will turn it over to former commissioner Riverboat, past captain Jake Hoffner.
Okay. I won't say fellow commissioners. Commissioners, Jake Hoffner, 515 Riverside, remember that rule, Madam Mayor?
Actually, we've changed some rules since you got off, Jake. We don't require anything that doesn't require a city...
Oh, really? I've been out of touch. I should ask Charlie what the rule was.[1511.33][1511.33][laughter] Madam Mayor, manager Leon, and Lisa, welcome. So you don't miss Al, anybody? See Al, we can put him...
Al, who?
Hey, and public, wow. Hey, I'm not going to come here and complain. I want to be talking proactively and all good stuff. The Yankton Regional Aviation Association, which I'm the president now, has, just wanted to come in here and give you a little bit update. I won't talk long, I know your agenda is long, but basically, the aviation group started in 1992, so we're actually quite old already, 32 years almost to the day, where a group of aviation enthusiasts got together and said, hey, let's make, work with the airport and the city. And since that time, we've had quite the accomplishments, but only with the partnerships. And I really mean that sincerely. Without the commission, without the state, without the FAA, any one of those, in the city especially, and our aviation group, any of those wouldn't have been a partner. There is no doubt we wouldn't be in existence today. That's all about, it's so important to see that come to action, and we've seen it happen in the city in various projects, where all the partnerships are important. And we have 90, close to 90 members now, which is pretty strong for our group. And one of the big things that we do is the airport breakfasts. We have 25 of them, and average 500 to 600 people every breakfast. And that money goes back to scholarships and the T-38. You know, the aircraft out there was our project back in the early 2000s, which was a partnership, was all involved, and that alone was a part of our fundraiser efforts from the flying breakfast. So, and of course, I could go on and on, but I will leave a copy if you can send it in your file. And one of the very big things we're excited about is Young Eagles, and that's kind of the foundation of our group. So 3,741 kids since 1993 have gotten a free airplane ride, and we're hoping that, there has been some comeback. We get response once in a while, say, hey, I learned, I got a ride, and it inspired me. So we're trying to keep that going as far as, that's the common goal. So we're really proud of the Young Eagles program, where we go into a classroom or we have an event, just tell them about aviation, all good stuff. So, and we're really excited about all the scholarships we've given. Again, I could go on, but I know that we had the economic impact of the airport that was published a while back. So from the Yankton Regional Aviation Association, thank you, and I'm not asking for money. I appreciate it, all your help.
Awesome, thanks, Jake. Thanks for the update, and thanks for all you're doing out there. Yeah, I do think our airport has come a long ways and very recognized in the region for what's being provided out there. And I know we've had a lot of airport improvements on our agenda as of late as well, so thank you to your work. I had a child that got one of those free flights, and she absolutely loved it, so thanks for all that you and the others are doing out there. He walked away from the microphone, but I would ask, did anybody have any questions? All right, you got off easy tonight, Jake. Both. For the folks who couldn't hear, he said, is that bad or good? Nobody had questions. And sometimes that's both. All right, we do, we're aware of, is Gail Jorgensen in the, you're right there? If you want to step up to the podium, please. We do broadcast these meetings, so we would like to have you at a microphone. Either one is fine, I guess either side, whatever's easier. There's one with a chair, and then there's one at the podium. Dave, you want to make sure that microphone's on, please? All right, Gail, I'll just have you state your name again, and then feel free to address the commission.
It's Gail Jorgensen.
Okay, thank you.
This far from you.
Oh, jeez. I'm not going to give the addresses unless you ask for them.
Nope, that's fine. You do not have to. We only need it if it affects the vote.
Okay. On Saturday, March 30, it was, I was concerned because I saw my neighbors go out the street putting all... putting all a bunch of junk out on the street. Well, not on the street, but in there for pickup. But I've known this lot, and he had just bought it, just bought the property, so, and he's from Iowa, Sioux City, so I didn't think he knew the rules of the city pickup. So, I took note of it, and then on Sunday, March 31st, I went to work and there I met somebody that knew the son of the guy that bought the land or the property. And I asked her if they knew about the rules for the pickup, that you got to have, well, you got to have, because if you read the rules, it doesn't say you have to have. But it doesn't have running water, it's got a well, it doesn't have sewer, it has a septic tank, and they do not have city garbage pickup, so nothing is there. So anyhow, I asked her if they knew the rules and regulations, and she said, yes, that it's been prearranged and the city was going to pick it up without any charge. So then on Monday, April Fool's Day, I called city manager's office, but she was out of town on April Fool's Day. So I called the street department, talked to him, told him my concern, I did not give the address. And he asked for it, so I gave it to him, and without thinking, he said, it's going to be picked up. So that made me a little irritated, that they put it out on Saturday. Sunday, I talked to somebody, they told me it was going to be prearranged to have it picked up. So on Tuesday, it got picked up. I called city manager again, told her about it, and she said, well, it's water under the bridge, that ain't the point. No city water, no city garbage, no city water, anything. And they got it picked up, prearranged to have it picked up. So then, just for shit and giggles, I did some more investigating. This is not the first time that this certain person has said, oh, that's all right, we'll take care of it. Buddy buddy system. I thought this was done in the 80s, completely forgot about. So then, I went and called the two garbage, the two garbage trucks that come and pick stuff up, and for a roll-off, that's 20-foot, it's $96 to drop it off, $219 for two tons, well, for a two-ton deal, and $75 a ton to dump it off. That's approximately $500. If it's a 30-foot roll-off, it comes out to be $525. But they don't accept appliances or paint and stuff like this. So, if you guys want to see how much garbage there was, I took a video of it, and there is more than a couple of tons. There's a couple appliances, there's a lot of stuff. He just saved that guy who doesn't have, and he doesn't even live there, that's another thing that's done. On the, what do you call that thing? Yes, it says owner occupied. He don't live there unless his name is Mr. Groundhog or Mr. and Mrs. Raccoon, because it is not livable. That house is not livable. Then, I got, also got pictures of the alley where I've been, since December 20th, the police officers went up the alley, knocked down the fence that stops them from going into the bike trail. What it is, is a little size of a license plate. It's so old, it's lost its reflection on it, and two posts, about three inches around, the guy that they were chasing knocked the post down, and the two posts on the end were busted. So I got tired of waiting for the city to fix it, so in February, I dug down and cement post, two posts down, cemented them, dug with the spade, it was not froze. Anyway, put them in, last weekend, here came one of those RV jobbies, and one post is down because they hit it. There's not a fence, it's just a chain link fence with a little, and that's it. And I got pictures of that too, if you guys are interested. That's it.
All right, commissioners, any questions for Gail?
I would just say, as far as the fence, I believe the city manager has informed us that that is scheduled to be repaired.
Yes.
Yep, yep, Gail and I talked about that. All right, thank you for coming in tonight.
Nobody wants to see a bunch of junk?
We don't, this isn't a published agenda item, so we have to be careful on what's provided. I think you can forward it to the city manager's office, and it can be shared then. It's one of those things that we have to be very transparent, and so to be able to do that without prior publication, we can't really do. But if you send it to the city manager's office.
All righty.
She'll be able to distribute it in a way that can be shared with the commission.
Oh, what? The house got guy?
All right, thank you for that, we appreciate citizens that come in to the commission and share that with us, so thank you. Those are the two I was aware of, I see somebody getting ready to stand up, so I think there's one more. If you want to go to the podium, give us your name and what business you have in front of the city commission tonight.
Good evening, my name's Rick Doherty, 811 Logan. I'll make it quick. My wife and I lease, are the broker owners of Anderson Realty here in town. Two years ago, we were given the facade grant to redo our building downtown. It's been a long road, and I'm just really here to say thanks, not only to the city commission, but to the people of Yankton whose taxpayer money paid for that. You guys probably don't hear it, but we get a tremendous amount of compliments from everybody in the city on how that project turned out. I didn't know a lot about masonry, I know way more now than I ever want to know, but the project ended up becoming a whole lot more than what we anticipated with re-bricking the whole west and south side of the building from the ground 12 feet up, just to get it to match aesthetically and look good. So I'm just here to say thank you to everybody that supported that, and a special thanks to Brad and Greg down at the city, just tremendous support, working with them, great guys, so thank you.
Well, Rick, thank you on behalf of the city commission for putting that in, it's a program we're very proud of, we're proud to be partners with our business owners in the downtown district, and I would agree, it looks beautiful, I love it.
Thank you.
You did a great job, so thank you for that. All right, anybody else that wants to address the city commission on something not on the agenda tonight? All right, I am not seeing any movement, so with that, we will move on to the consent agenda. Number one is to establish May 13th, 2024 is the date for a public hearing on the applications for renewal of a 2024/25 malt beverage and South Dakota Farm wine license. Number two is to establish May 13th, 2024 is the date for a public hearing on the application for a special on-sale malt beverage retailer's license and a special on-sale wine retailer's license for one day, May 18th, 2024, from the center located at 900 Whiting Drive. Number three is to establish May 13th, 2024 is the date for the public hearing on the application for a special on-sale malt beverage retailer's license and a special on-sale wine retailer's license for one day, July 19th, 2024, from the center, again, located at 900 Whiting Drive. And number four, city manager Leon already went through, but that is consideration of memorandum 24-99, correcting a memorandum number passed by the commission at the April 8th, 2024 city commission meeting. Memorandum 24-27 for the terminal airport apron reconstruction design grant application, should have read memorandum 24-77. That is the end of the consent agenda, what is the pleasure of the commission?
I'll move the consent agenda.
Second, we do have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Anybody abstaining? All right, consent agenda passes. Moving on then to old business, number one is consideration of memorandum 24-93 regarding a request for a special on-sale malt beverage retailer's license and a special on-sale wine retailer's license for one day, May 4th, 2024, from the center located at 900 Whiting Drive. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second, we do have a motion and a second, is there any commission discussion? Anybody in the public? We'll call.
Johnson?
Aye.
Minor?
Aye.
Schram?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Hanoff?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye, motion carries. Number two is consideration of memorandum 24-94 regarding a request for a special on-sale liquor license for one day, May 4th, 2024, from RB Grill House and Sports Bar, 2901 Broadway Avenue. The event will take place at the NFAA Easton Archery Center located at 800 Archery Lane. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any commission discussion? Anybody in the public? We'll call.
Minor?
Aye.
Schram?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Hanoff?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye, motion carries. Number three is consideration of memorandum 24-95 regarding a request for a special on-sale malt beverage retailer's license for one day, August 17th, 2024, from the Yankton Rodeo Association, Inc., located at 43371 310th Street, for an event that will take place at the rodeo grounds at 404 Paddle Wheel Drive. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second, we have a motion and a second, any commission discussion? Anybody in the public? We'll call.
Schram?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Hanoff?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Minor?
Aye.
Schram?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye, motion carries. Moving on to new business, number one is consideration of memorandum 24-96 recommending that the city commission retain RDG, planning and design for strategic planning process as described in the associated agreement. This does increase the cost by $15,000, but the comprehensive plan came in $25,000 under projected costs. So Amy, anything to share there, kind of, what are we talking about when we say for community transparency, a comprehensive plan and then the strategic plan?
Yes, so I would say the comprehensive plan gives us more of a step-by-step, how do we get to where we want to be, and the strategic plan is more of the broader, long-term visions. While moving forward in this manner puts off the strategic plan a little more than I had hoped, I think it's a really nice dovetail to have the comprehensive planning process where we have lots of community input on lots of different things throughout the course of over a year than to have RDG come back and visit with us and say, okay, now that we know sort of the nuts and bolts and the values and the goals, what are the dreams? And so this is what we're asking for this evening, also fits within the budget of the comprehensive plan, so that's nice, we're not asking for additional budget allocation, rather may just need to carry some funds forward into the next year. We worked with RDG before, they worked on our last comprehensive plan, or excuse me, last strategic plan, and this comprehensive plan, they understand where we're trying to go and that we would really like just a map through those tools to get to the community that we'd like to see in the future, so happy to answer any questions, otherwise I think we'll be very familiar with by the time we get to this point with RDG staff, and our community should be comfortable with them too, probably get a little better feedback than we have before with this document than last time.
Awesome, thank you for walking through that. With that, unless there's questions for the city manager, what is the pleasure of the commission? Move to approve. Second, we do have a motion and a second, and now that we do, is there any commission discussion?
So it'd be probably March or so next year when we would start going through?
Probably a little later, I think, I think it just depends upon how things go. I'm anticipating that we'll have a couple of, you know, canceled meetings throughout the winter due to weather and availability and things of that nature, but I would think certainly by spring, summer, we're moving into heavy discussion. I think too, sorry, just to, I won't go on and on, but I think too, one of the neat things is, some of the things they're looking at to get input are less meetings, since people get, grow tired of meetings and less survey-based, although there will be some of that, but more pop-up events, so you're in Hy-Vee or you're in Walmart or you're in, you know, somewhere, you're at the library and wherever we are able to get permission, and you can participate briefly in the planning process without spending your whole afternoon or committing a whole evening, which I think works great for especially young parents and people on the go.
Yeah, thank you for that, and I do think, I think you're right, I do think, you know, in looking at the comprehensive plan, and then, once we get all the feedback from that, looking at a strategic plan, plus it puts us past November and maybe kind of understanding where we may end up with that, I think all timing kind of really fits for that, so sometimes maybe a timeline changed is a blessing in disguise, and this might be one of them to give us more accurate input, which is always appreciated. Any other commission questions or discussion? Anybody in the public? We'll call.
Weber?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Hanoff?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Minor?
Aye.
Schram?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye, motion carries. Number two is consideration of memorandum 24-97 regarding an agreement for public improvements with the stencil group LLC. Dave, you probably shouldn't have known I was going to call on you on this, I did read through the packet, but, so mostly understanding, not an issue, but just more of a timing and grant funding, or maybe you could walk us through that?
Yeah, it's a, it's a timing and documentation miss as far as what South Dakota Housing Development Authority bonding requirements include and what actually happens in the field at the project site, and for South Dakota Housing to assist projects within the corporate limits, they require the cities to accept portions of the projects that are going to be in the public right-of-way, public infrastructure. And in this instance specifically, and you're going to see one of these for every one of our housing projects that we've been talking about recently because there's South Dakota Housing's involved in them in one way or another, but in this instance, we actually have private service connections that will be in the right-of-way for things like water and sewer that they would want us to at this point, before they release within the corporate limits, they require the cities to accept portions of the projects that are going to be in the public right-of-way, public infrastructure. And in this instance specifically, and you're going to see one of these for every one of our, our housing projects that we've been talking about recently because there's South Dakota Housing's involved in them in one way or another. But in this instance, we actually have private service connections that will be in the right-of-way for things like water and sewer that they would want us to at this point, before they release any assistance, any of their assistance to the Stensel Group, they would want us to accept them. Well, we can't accept them because they're not in the ground yet. So this is a contractual document that our, our, actually our, our tax increment district advisor Toby Morris came up with, got it approved by South Dakota Housing. We've looked through it in detail and essentially it, it is a number of pages that state exactly what we already have covered in our own, in our own coordinances, so we're comfortable with, with recommending it if it handles the issue of the timing misalignment for South Dakota Housing, so these projects can keep going.
Thank you for walking through that. I wanted to make sure I understood it correctly and what I read. With that description then, what is the pleasure of the commission?
So moved. Second.
We do have a motion and a second. And now that we do, is there any questions or comments from the commission related to this? Anybody in the public? We'll call.
Benson?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Hanoff?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Minor?
Aye.
Schram?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye. Motion carries. Number three, I'm going to kind of go off script here. I'm going to ask Dwayne to pull up the picture if he can to display. That was in the commission packet. I think that that would be helpful as we discuss this. So as he gets that ready to go, I'll read what it is. I'll probably ask Adam to also come up to the microphone here. He gets out of a lot of meetings where he doesn't have to talk, so. Oh, he's giving me, he's looking at me funny. He thinks he talks more than he does. All right. So with that, number three, as published in the agenda, is consideration of memorandum 24-100 recommending the approval of resolution 24-24, establishing no parking areas along the south curb line of 21st Street for a distance of 150 feet east and west of Mulberry Street. So that seems pretty clear. I know I was anxious to scroll down and see the actual picture because I'm like, wait, 150 feet? What are we talking about there? Adam, if you could, before I ask for the pleasure of the commission, I think I want to have a little bit of discussion about how this came about, kind of what's in the commission packet as far as what you all in the engineering department looked at, why this kind of plan came forward, and just kind of any thoughts there? And if approved tonight, since you're already at the microphone, how does this get out? Were police involved? Like where, how are we going to enforce this and what does that look like? So I'll let you start.
Yeah, so like it says, city staff received some concerns about the traffic. This is at the, the Yankton Middle School location. What the intersection that's pictured there is 21st and Mulberry, just to the north of the middle school. And the concern was the, the flow of traffic during the morning and after school hours when, when students are being dropped off and picked up for school, to and from school. We observed this intersection at both times of the day, the morning drop-off and the afternoon pickup. A few times, more than a few times actually, just kind of sat off to the side, watched what was going on, how the traffic was moving, what the flow was. And one of the big things was the northbound traffic on Mulberry Street approaching 21st Street. It was very apparent that there was visibility issues for those that maneuver, those motorists trying to maneuver either north on Mulberry or east or west on 21st Street, that there was an obvious sight distance issue because of cars parked close to those, to the Mulberry Street intersection on 21st Street on the south side. So this approach would increase the sight distance dramatically to allow motorists to be able to see both directions oncoming traffic. And it'll also help improve there's, there is pedestrian movements across that intersection, either in the morning, walking south across the intersection, or in the afternoons, going north. This will also help with the pedestrian movements as, as it was obvious the pedestrians had trouble seeing if there was cars coming as well. So I think this will help that aspect, keeping that Mulberry Street traffic moving north to help keep flow moving in a, in a moving fashion that doesn't create congestion further south on the block. If that makes sense.
It does. I've driven that street with two middle schoolers and I call it the gauntlet because it is, it is a treat. For those of you that haven't had to drive that at school drop-off or pickup, you're fortunate. If you want to entertain yourself someday, just try it and see how it maneuver. I do, I, this is great. I, I'm glad that this was brought forward. I, I think it's a good fix to see if that, that helps. So how, if approved tonight, Adam, the second part of my question is, how is this then getting out to the public? Because I could see too, and if Chief Foot needs to, to comment as well, I could see somebody going, well, yeah, it says no parking, but I'm only going to be here for a couple of minutes. I'm just picking up my kid. I'm not parking here, going to a friend's house. I'm not doing any of that. Is it going to be no parking during certain hours of the day? Is it going to be no parking all day long? I'm just curious like how this is going to look and then how it's enforced.
So this would be no parking anytime. There'd be, the curbs would be painted yellow and there'll be signs indicating there's no parking from this point to the corner, both directions. I should've, should've mentioned as well, this is a school zone, so during that, those morning hours and afternoon hours, 21st Street does have flashers indicating 15 miles per hour. It is a school zone, so traffic should be slowing down. There also is a, a pedestrian activated flasher on the west side of the intersection for the north-south pedestrian movement. So that's available all year round, any time of the day, because there is a, a number of parks patrons that come from the north, cross the intersection there. Obviously, it may take a little bit of enforcement if people aren't understanding they can't park in those areas. And we can work with the police department on that. We've, we've had conversations with the school. We'll make sure they get the information so they can pass that along as they see fit to their parents and, and drivers and whatnot.
I'm full of questions tonight. So if this is voted on tonight by the commission, when would it go into effect? And when would it be correctly marked? And again, I, I keep looking at Chief Foot. At what point do we give so many warnings or opportunities and then start enforcing it? Because I, I kid you not, I've seen yellow painted curbs, people park anyway. Again, I would go with the mentality, I'm only here a couple of minutes. I'm just picking up my kid. Where we draw the line at that? So one, how soon does it get implemented and understanding schools coming? I mean, we're about a month away. And then two, how do we plan to tackle this enforcement-wise?
I'd like to tell you it'd be able to happen tomorrow, but it's not going to happen that quick. I have had conversations with staff. They're planning on calling and locates tomorrow or, or this week. So hopefully by the end of next week, we have something in place.
Just so the mayor and commissioner know too, we visited with Wayne Kendall at the school and he's okay with this change and he's, understands the situation too at that intersection. So what I told him is, you know, I'd let him know what happens tonight and then be able to give him a little better timeline based on when we do locate, so he can communicate with parents as well a little bit, however, whatever fashion he would like, in hopes that they can recognize that change too before the end of the school year.
Education's going to be the, the biggest thing for any change like this, but we will enforce it. The only thing is with parking complaints, we're, we're taking calls during the day. We're handling the speed zones and the school zones. So we may or may not see it at the time and it may be somebody that parks there quick and gets out of there without a fine. But if we see it, we'll deal with it. If not, we'll get them next time hopefully.
Appreciate that. Adam, last question. Sorry. They're all like, get moving. Did you not see, just, just for clarification, did you not see the same issue on the north side of Mulberry? Because I could see cars. I mean, when people drop off and pick up, they're also pulling up pretty close to, to the north side of Mulberry, which could then mean as kids are going to school in the morning, are cars encroaching on it? Making it the same issue coming from Mulberry south across the intersection? Or is it really only as people are going north? There's not the same issue as cars are coming south on Mulberry, trying to do the same on 21st Street?
We didn't observe any issues coming from the north side. And there's not as much room to park on that side. And I think it's less desirable too for picking up and dropping off just so they're not getting out on 21st Street.
Okay. I was kind of curious about that. I apologize. That's, I think, all of my questions. So I will open it up to the commission. I know we do not have a motion yet, but I want to make sure folks know what's being asked. If there are no other commissioners with questions or comments, what is your pleasure?
I know I'm not the only commissioner who's heard frustrations about this intersection, so I appreciate staff taking the time to really dig into it, study it and come up with this recommendation. With that, I'll make the motion that we approve it.
Second. We do have a motion and a second. Now that we do, is there any commission discussion? My only question, Adam, kid you not, I told an engineer that lives in my house, have we thought about a roundabout? I'm kidding. Don't answer.
They need a little more time to do that.
Something to think about in the future, maybe a roundabout to keep things moving. All right. We don't, we don't have one yet, so I'm just trying, right? Okay, I'm kidding. All kidding aside. We do have a motion and a second. I did not see any microphones come on from the commission. Anybody in the public want to make a comment or question? All right, seeing no movement, we'll call.
Brunick?
Aye.
Hanoff?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Minor?
Aye.
Schram?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye. Motion carries. And with that, I hope all folks involved in this realize that we're making this decision to try to keep our schoolchildren and even those that drive in this area safe during those very busy time of the day with school drop-off and pickup. So we're not trying to make it more difficult. We're trying to make our community more safe. So just wanted to say that. Number four then under new business is consideration of memorandum 24-101 recommending the approval of leasing the office space in the crash building to IFLYUSA, Inc. John Halsted, member manager. What is your pleasure?
So moved. Second. We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion?
Anybody in the public? We'll call.
Hanoff?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Minor?
Aye.
Schram?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye. Motion carries. That concludes new business on our agenda. The next part of our agenda is other business. I did not have any other business brought to me before the meeting tonight, but we'll just double check considering we had a couple of public comments. Any other business? All right, seeing no microphones come on, I would ask for a motion to adjourn the April 22nd, 2024 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Anybody abstaining? Meeting adjourned. Have a great night, folks.